Each of our two candidates was given a choice between two topics to present on to the public and to city councils part of the open meeting process. The presentation is planned to last twenty to thirty minutes with questions. And this evening, Mr. Castro, I presented on building a more resilient and adaptable very post COVID. So with that, I will turn it over to him. And introduce himself to you all.
Thank you, Chair Gustaf.
Sorry, I just want to make sure, did I fix the sound issue, Bern and Michael? Can you hear now? There we go.
Good day. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, City Manager McKenzie. And members of the task force in public here today and listening at home. My name is Nicholas Castro. As a man, as said, I'm Chief Financial Administrative Officer at a nonprofit in New York City that managed school buses. And really excited to be here today. I've had a whirlwind day here in the city of Berry. And just really excited about the people I've met, the conversations I've had. And happy to talk to you here about building a more resilient and adaptable very post COVID.
This might be a good opportunity to get your presentation up on the stage.
All right, let's go to slide two. So just, just so you have it at home and here in the chambers. The prompt to me was though the trajectory of COVID, of the COVID pandemic is still far from certain. It seems that Berry and other cities in Vermont have begun to pivot away from the hardships the crisis imposed. So how can the municipal government best leverage this moment in time to create the best long-term benefit for the city? Both in terms of making the best use of funding that has not yet been designated and in planning for an economically resilient future. So incredibly important question and really glad to be talking about it here with the elected representatives of the city. Because, you know, together you and whoever is in this role in the next couple of months will have some very, very important decisions to make about this. This resource coming from the federal government to tackle some, some challenges in the city. So let's go to slide three, just to show you sort of a roadmap of what I'll be talking through. And first is, you know, if we're going to talk about the hardships and what to do about them, really need to have sort of consensus about what they were. And, you know, so I think that we need to define, you know, the who, the what, the where, all the hardships. Who felt them the strongest and, and have some consensus around that. Oh, we need to, I'm going to talk about rethinking delivery of municipal services, steps to build a resilient and adaptable city. Talk about making those smart investments with the resources that are coming our way. And then how do we get started on that? It's going to be a big, a big road ahead of all of us, whoever's in this role. So, you know, just before I get started on this, you know, I, you know, I think I live COVID differently than, than people in Berry did. And that's okay, you know, COVID struck different places differently. So, you know, what I'll be talking about are, you know, the things that I've, I've learned about as I've read about the city. About the region and really in my conversations today with people, I try to ask them about this, knowing that I'll be speaking to about it. So, you know, I think that I'd be the first to admit that I, I have a lot to understand about really the impacts of COVID here. So these are just some of the thoughts from, from these initial conversations with, with members of the, of the community. So let's go to slide, the next slide, slide three. So, um, there we go, sorry. So, you know, just, just very broadly, like I mentioned, you know, the importance of developing a consensus about what the hardships were, right? We have an opportunity to spend significant federal resources to address hardships, right? So we should know and have a, you know, agreement about what those hardships were because that will really direct where the funding should go and what it should do. So just in very general terms, right, I think we can sort of think about hardships in, in three broad buckets, right? And one of them is the economic hardship for people in various industries that are particularly vulnerable. Like tourism, hospitality, restaurants, bars, small businesses, arts, all face disproportionate impact from this pandemic, right? And I, I know just in my, in walking through today with a partnership, heard about, you know, storefronts that, you know, no longer there because somebody went out of business during pandemic. I also heard remarkable stories about companies that opened during the pandemic and are still here. So I think that, that, you know, it's one of the areas of showing incredible resilience in this community of people who, you know, started a business during hard time to start one and they're still around. But also a lot of empty storefronts of people who didn't, didn't make it. So obviously that economic hardship, a big part of what, what was felt. And not just sort of on the business side, around the personal level, right against the housing and job losses, wage losses. I know there were situations with furloughs, a lot of, you know, layoffs and people who were already maybe on the brink with the housing situation just got pushed over the edge with this, with this pandemic. You know, you had the stress on the government resources and services, right? So just loss of revenue for many municipalities that leads to, you know, loss of what the government can do. And you needed to take dramatic actions to account for that revenue loss. So there was that, that, you know, that basic just government impact of having less, having to pivot to remote services where, you know, luckily many, you know, we showed incredible resilience in most parts of this country to be able to do that, but still governments were operating with less. And that, you know, had an impact on, on the services and unfortunately many situations probably impacted the people who needed them the most or being hit hardest by the pandemic. And then just the, you know, the, the social emotional trauma, right? So we need to recognize the impacts that of the shutdowns. It was hard on people. And, you know, I, I know that especially difficult on vulnerable populations already, transient populations were especially hit. It was really hard along racial demographic lines. And so there was, and, and I know there's substance abuse challenges in the community, but not, that are not just in Berry, but in the state and in the, really the country overall. And, you know, I don't think, I don't think those substance abuse problems started with the pandemic, but it certainly did help. So we need to, you know, those are, you know, they, those are the areas where I think the hardships were felt hardest. And, and, you know, areas where we think, we need to think about addressing. So let's go to slide five. So I think there's a couple of ways to think about, you know, how the government should leverage this one, right? So there's one way is to think about how government works, right? And how do we make it adapt and work better, right? So the, the process of government. And number two is, you know, what, what government does, right? And, and how it can be responsive to the hardships that people felt in the crisis. So just want to take a few minutes here on this slide to talk about that first part, you know, how government works and delivers services. So, you know, as I said, the speed with which this crisis hit us really forced governments to flip on a switch and do things that they've never really done before. And I think it showed us not just how adaptable humans can be, but how quickly government can act, right? I think government gets this, this, this stigma of, you know, not moving fast and not being decisive. And, you know, that, that can be, it's a stigma for a reason. But we also show that it doesn't have to be that way, that government can act quickly and decisively. And so, you know, I think that we can continue, you know, this hybrid work, which was good for, you know, the employees tend to like. We can keep and expand the online services that we brought with the pandemic that people tend to like. And, you know, keep those as part of our, our service delivery moving forward. And, and part of that as well is developing and maintaining an agile workforce. And I think the, the, the jobs that we have now may not be the jobs of the future. And I think what that means, and I'll talk a little about this a little bit later, is how do we train the workforces that we have to make them agile and responsive to the new ways we have of delivering municipal services? Give people training to improve themselves or services so that they can sort of grow and adapt with, with the city. I think another big part of this is to be open to further innovation. You know, one of my, I've worked in government for a long time. And I got to tell you, one of the things I'd love to do is retire that phrase that we have to do it this way because that's the way we've always done, right? And that's, we proved that that's, we can get rid of that because we did almost everything in a way we've never done it before in many governments. And so, you know, we, we shouldn't get tunnel vision when we talk about, you know, adaptable and nimble government and thinking that all that means is hybrid and remote work. We should be open to more innovation. Because there's, the fact is that many municipalities have been doing things creatively and finding different ways of doing things for a long time. And now is the time to change, right? Where if we're going to sort of be looking at this new model that was sort of forced upon us. And we're going to be implementing change, this is a time to, you know, to keep innovating and not be sort of siloed into the hybrid remote world. That's not the only way that, that government can innovate. And, you know, one of the, the great things I think that came out of COVID. And I hesitate to use great things coming out of COVID, you know, because it's been so devastating. But one of the ways government innovated quickly out of necessity was communication. And because we had to, governments had to get in touch with the residents as cases and information was changing. You know, later on, as, as vaccines became available, there were just amazing things that governments did to get in touch with their people to keep them informed about what was going on. And so, you know, an example we have, we're living through one today, you know, we're having a Zoom council meeting. I don't know, Berry did that before, I suspect not, but we have, you know, now this council meeting over the internet where people can be watching us on their couch or later tonight. Boards, commissions, you name it, is now happening online. And I think that's a great thing because it, it made government more accessible to more people. And I think having government be accessible to more people is, is a good thing. I think communication plus accessibility and transparency leads to, leads to more trust. And, and we need, we need trust to do big and hard things. Because that's, that's what, you know, the folks in front of me are faced with and the person who's going to be in Steve's shoes will be faced as well, making, making hard decisions. And I think that we're better suited to do that when we have the trust of our residents. And we can gain that trust when they are, the process is accessible and visible and people feel heard. And, and the government adapts to what, to what it hears from its constituents. So that was part one about rethinking sort of how government does and how it works. So let's go to slide six and talk about sort of what government can do to address some of these hardships. So talked about the economic hardships of really job loss, job losses and wage losses. And I think one of the things that came to mind to me today, and it's really been a theme throughout many of my conversations with a lot of members of the community, is, you know, workforce development and training. You know, the, I heard from the, the city department heads about difficulties recruiting people for vacant positions. I heard about, I heard from the city employees about having to do double jobs and being stretched too thin in what they're doing already. I heard from different members of the business community about struggling also to bring in employees or from people who are struggling to get people to come work on, on houses and get, you know, construction. And the Department of Public Works struggling to get people, contractors to do HAB. So I think workforce development and training is, is a key component of, of, you know, how do we, of, of creating a pipeline of people to fill the jobs that are needed in, in the city. And there's lots of ways to do this. I, you know, heard great things about the Career Technical Center that you have here in town. I'm a big fan of career technical education. I think that it's, it's also been unfairly stigmatized. I think that a career technical job, many places provides, you know, job security, provides a good union job that comes with benefits and a pension. And it fills the need of a city. So I think workforce development training is, is, is key component and checks off many boxes in terms of, you know, keeping people employed, you know, making sure people have skills. And keeping the economy humming and keeping city services and city government staff for what's needed. But in terms of the, you know, the stress on government resources and services, you know, there's opportunities to repurpose and maximize vacant and underutilized space in buildings. Saw, you know, big, big, a big building on Main Street here that appears to be vacant, not, and I'm not just talking to the storefronts. It looked like a massive brick building that could be loft apartments, housing or offices or whatever the case may be. And I think that an opportunity to, you know, make this vacant space accessible. Because we have, you know, I'll talk a little bit about it later, but the, the housing issues, right? And so, you know, had a, I know the city struggles with this ability to grow in terms of where to place housing. So making use of all that vacant space is, is key. Heard from a high school student today who talked about expanding the use of the opera, which, which is great, you know? I think that also another opportunity to get more revenue and get more people here and really create opportunities for those high school kids. We're looking for, for things to, to do here in, in the city. You know, and the other thing is, you know, talking about, you know, rethinking the way government works and deliver services. I, I think that's not just a convenience thing, but in many ways that can lead to efficiencies and savings that then allows you to reinvest elsewhere. And I, I think that, that it's, you know, done properly, you can, you can really gain efficiencies from, from rethinking the way you, you deliver services. To, to ease the pressures on the budget elsewhere. In terms of the, you know, social emotional trauma, you know, I'd like to think about it in the context of, you know, making remote work work, like making it something that people can do. If it's here to stay, right? And by, you know, by all accounts, it sure seems to be that way. Workers tend to like it. Companies tend to be okay with it. You know, we have to find a way to, to make it manageable for, for the people who are doing it. So I heard a couple of times today about the need for childcare that comes along with it. You know, I, I have two kids at home and I'll tell you that remote work was wonderful and was, but it was challenging. Having to teach math and prepare for art projects while you're trying to, you know, get ready for a meeting is not easy. So I think if we do innovative things like finding ways to, to help people have childcare, have extracurricular activities. I heard a lot from the high school kids about needing things to do here, like, like my question to them was, how can we keep you here? And a lot of them said, we, we want things to do, right? And, you know, I think that the thing about that is that there are tremendous assets here that I've seen in my time in the city that, that could be things for, for these kids to do. And, and kids also need these opportunities to socialize after the very difficult two years they've been having anyway. And look, and it's really a win-win-win, right? If you get kids in the situation, you, you help employees be productive at home working, you help kids socialize and be involved in great safe activities. And you're supporting a local nonprofit who employs people in the, in the community. So I think those are the kinds of things we can do to, to ease that, the social emotional trauma that came with the remote work. And, you know, sort of this last point here, there's great, you know, great open spaces here, around here. And we, I think we've all learned how important they are for, you know, in, in these last two years. And so making sure that we have to maintain them, I saw beautiful pool that I know is going to be a great resource for the community. And so those are things that are important, those are things that keep, give people things to do, keep the kids happy. And they're, they're valuable, important assets that, that will help us, God forbid, we have to go through something like we did in the last year. Slide six, please. So then, you know, the last part of the prompt was about these really, you know, how do we leverage the funding we have, which is significant. It's, it's a big part of my name. We have a lot of challenges, but we also have a lot of opportunities and really have to make the best of, of this resource. So I, I sort of come into it thinking about it in two, with two key principles. One is because it's one-time funding, right? So I think you have to prioritize one-time non-recurring expenses because otherwise we're just creating cliffs down the, down the line. And that is, is going to be harder to recover from, right? We're just, we're going to be creating a, our own crisis, fiscal crisis if, if we take on too many recurring expenses. So really think about those things that are one-time non-recurring costs. And, you know, I think the other piece is, you know, to not overlook the people and businesses here now. I think there may be, there may be some temptations to think about, you know, can we do things to attract people to this area? And, you know, make investments that drop people here. And I, you know, I don't want to minimize, I know how important that is. It's the lifeblood of a city to be able to attract people. But, you know, this, this is a recovery program, right? And so I think we have to think about recovery for the people and the businesses that are here now. And so I think that, that has to be also an important part of how, you know, we, we have this conversation. Again, you know, it's important to be an attractive place and want to bring people here, but remember that we're talking about recovery of, of a very significant, a traumatic event for, for the city. So with that, let's go to slide eight. So here's, you know, here's just my thoughts based on, you know, my, my conversations and things I observe. And about, you know, what kind of investments would seem to make sense for the city. And one is to really make, make a down payment on, on needed infrastructure upgrades. You know, I think that meets the, the, the sort of the principle of one time, not recurring. And it's, it's really, you know, a can we just, it's hard to kick down the road because it just becomes worse and worse and more expensive and more expensive. So I think that includes just city assets, city sewer water that is in need of repair and, and city housing. There's, you know, a lot of, of, you know, finding ways to increase supply and just, I know that people leave the final rule for art was upgraded to allow for weatherization, which, you know, the housing stock is not only, you know, lacking, but it's, it's in disrepair. And so I think making the housing stock, upgrading the housing stock would be a wise, wise investment. And this, this seems to be a shared priority. Recent ICMA survey showed that a lot, a lot of communities believe that this will be their, their spending priority with the art funding. And then, and then really focusing on, on the targeted investments that I, I mentioned previously, right? So, and, and really leveraging other sources of funding to make those investments. So I'm very, you know, as I've been learning about the city and the state, been, you know, really excited to see that the state government seems to have made workforce development a priority. That they seem to have some of that funding available in their recovery plan. And so to the extent the city can leverage any extra dollar that comes from outside to do these things, it's an extra dollar that we have to do something else, you know, with, with the resources we have. You know, like I mentioned, talking about making remote work work, so working with CDOs, you know, who are important employers and, and parts of the community. And supporting our, our shared assets is important as well. And then I, I think it's, you know, as you go through this process, to keep your fingers on the pulse of, of equity and the next generation, right? So we talked about that first slide about the hardships and how there was really a disproportionate impact of this pandemic. And, you know, and, you know, I wasn't, I was fortunate, I wasn't impacted, my job was fine and safe. I was able to work from home, I kept my job, it wasn't furloughed. But a lot of people didn't experience COVID that way. And so I think we have, and especially people along wealth lines and wealth poverty lines and racial demographics as well. And, and people who are vulnerable already anyway. So I think we have to keep, you know, fingers on the pulse of that, that, you know, targeting the funding towards those populations that were both the hardest hit and are the most vulnerable to another, another crisis. And then, you know, really want to finish by saying that, on this point, that with all due respect to all the people I met with today, my favorite meeting of the day was, was with those high schoolers at Spalding High School. And, you know, it's because, you know, I like to think of them, you know, this, I'm going to sound terribly cliche-ish right here, but, you know, the, the kids are the future, right? And, you know, I talked about focusing on the people who are here now and the businesses that are here now with these investments. And not being, you know, tempted to look for people to come from elsewhere. And, you know, I, I think about those high school kids, you know, they're here now. What can we do? One of my questions to them was, what can we do to keep you here? What kind of things can the city do to make sure that you want to have a career here, build a family here too? And so I think we should, we should keep that in mind when, when we're thinking about this, that, you know, what kind of investments will, will make it so that those kids are here, that we can develop them. So that they can be part of the pipeline to work not only in these businesses, but to work in city government and be members of our community. So I think that's an important, you know, thing to, to also keep in mind as these difficult decisions are, are part of it. So going to the next slide, slide nine. You know, this is, there's a lot, there's a lot of work ahead of, a lot of, a lot of work ahead of you, this community and whoever's in this role. So, you know, how are you going to get started on this process? You know, for me, what I can tell you would be a lot of community engagement and all the feedback. This is a, this is a very meaningful, large investment and really have to get it right, really have to get it right. Because opportunities like this don't come around very often. Unfortunately, this one came about because of very terrible prices that our nation went through, but we, we can't, we can't mess this one up. So have to do a lot of community engagement, public feedback to get, you know, not only the consensus about the hardships, but, you know, those right targeted investments to make sure that we're, we're getting, every dollar is going as far as it can. You know, one of the great things about being a municipal government is that you're not alone and you're not reinventing the wheel. There are people throughout the state, throughout the region, throughout the country, where city managers, council members, mayors, who are confronting these same questions. And we can, you know, learn from them, see what they're doing and figure out, you know, and help that inform the, the plans for, for Berry. figure out, you know, and help that inform the, the plans for, for BARRY. So I think it's, it's important, you know, it's, it's a great value of being a government that it's sort of an open source, open resource to get, to get innovation and ideas about, about things that make sense. And then, you know, I, I mentioned this with, you know, sort of leveraging the other funding, but, you know, you know, the, the needs, the needs are greater than the resources we're going to get, right? There's a lot, there's a tremendous amount of potential in the city, also has a lot of needs. And, you know, this, this federal funding is not going to cover all of them, right? So I think we need to find ways to, to leverage those other sources of funding. Like I said, thankfully, I know, at least in workforce development, this there, the state seems to share that priority. So every dollar that you can leverage that way is another dollar you can spend elsewhere in BARRY. And then, you know, after going through that, you know, you make hard decisions. Like I, like I said, you know, it's, we're not in a situation where we're going to be able to do everything that everybody wants. But if we, you know, go through a public process, that we're open, transparent about the needs, the hardships, and where the investments make sense, you know, we'll be able to make some, some hard decisions together. And I think that city will be, will be better off for that. So with that, I want to thank all of you. Had a wonderful conversation with you, had a great, you know, every, every meeting I've had in BARRY today has been really wonderful. I want to thank the members of the task force who are inviting me here today. And I, I welcome your, your question.
Thank you, Nicholas, for the great presentation and your interest in the city. Certainly thankful to be glad to have you as a finalist in this process. Now, are there any questions for members of council or members of the public?
Well, we had a lot of questions. We're going on twelve and a half, thirteen hours. So Nicholas, it's been a pleasure to meet you.
Thank you.
Your resume, like I said, it's been a pleasure to meet you and you've earned a little bit of a break tonight.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
I would move to a chair, Mayor, if there's nothing else.
Would you like to deliver it to all or just deliver it to them all?
Except to the members of the council, I'm happy to stick around.
Let's keep it for a moment.
Okay.
Obviously, then I'm going to make a motion.
And I would recommend that we take a moment to have a little bit of a recess and send our candidates off and thank the members of the city manager, the task force here tonight.
I'm going to go tuck them in.
I, I think you've heard that I'm picking up our other candidate at eleven fifty-one PM at the airport this evening, so. I will not be tucked in for some time.
All right, well, let's, um, we'll take a, if we, the council does reject by the committee recess, and then.
Thank you, Nicholas.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna mute the mic.
Hey, Teddy.
Yes, Barry.
Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Will you let Carol know that I think her email got?
I'm sorry, can I tell Carol what? I can hear you even if it sounds better.
I think her email was.
Yes, yes, we were talking about that earlier. Thank you for that.
Okay.
Thank you, Barry.
I don't know if you should mute.
Just want to let you know I'm still on mute.
Yeah, we were still just, we were still just shooting the shit, I guess.
Oh.
It's a noise your orchestra.
I apologize.
It's a reflex, Michael.
Is he laughing?
He's been in the picture.
Are you laughing at me, Michael?
It's just shiny whites.
No, no, it's fine.
It's fine, it'll be more classy.
I do think that you shouldn't mute it when, when we're in recess, just so you know.
Yes, now I know, I know.
Why, you know? Oh, it's a beautiful name.
Yeah.
Probably more than a minute.
Yeah.
Better too much than not enough, I guess.
Yep.
Catch up on social life.
So, I have put on the agenda for the 31st, for next week, on the authorization to implement the local option sales tax. Governor hasn't signed it yet, but went to him last week, so whether he signs it or it just becomes law, it'll be fine for, for next week, so.
Yeah, ten days or something, about.
Yeah, so he's gonna sign it by tomorrow. That's just.
Hello?
Yeah.
He still hasn't gotten us $100.
No, I know, well, they're, yeah.
Yeah, because they're dealing with the 250,000 bill that he has on again.
Yeah, when do you want to do it?
Oh, you don't think he's gonna sign it, 226?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to.
What's your shift? I think that I.
As long as the kids get that next year.
I know.
Yeah.
No, it's not all the morning.
It's so important.
You got it, brother.
To not have that issue, it's cool.
The city wants their speed car back.
Well, what are you here before?
What did you do with the speed car? Did you go, did you hook on to it and take it away?
By the way.
Oh, oh, oh.
Oh, was it?
We were doing work in there this winter, so didn't, it had a bunch of space that I didn't have use for. So they put the Humvees, Michael would be real excited, they put the two Humvees and the speed car in there for the winter.
Ah, and they wanted that.
And now they want it back, huh? Go figure.
I still want to have her ride in one of those vehicles.
I sold it.
We'll take it out of your $1,000.
I'm gonna get the $1,000.
No, he always gives it away.
He didn't police it. What were you waiting for?
Waiting for.
The time.
Full 15 minutes to go.
What was your run today, Val? I saw you had a late afternoon run.
Well, it wasn't a run, it was a walk. Because I had time, because I wanted to be back, you know, to get my head back together tonight.
Okay.
And so I gave myself a certain number of minutes out, and then a certain number of minutes back. But, yeah, so it wasn't a run, it wasn't what I wanted, but it was.
It was what you got. It's a beautiful afternoon for it.
Oh, yeah.
This, this is my thing, this is my idea of perfect weather.
Because that was, I like a little, a teeny bit warmer nowhere.
I could handle, I could handle 10 degrees warmer, but I, but I love this.
But the breeze, breeze is good.
Yeah, then?
Yes, it's its charm, yeah, truly.
How are your grandkids?
Pardon?
How are your grandkids?
Yes. I only read escapist literature.
Oops, escapist.
Uh, right now Louise Penny Canadian Office, right, this is a book. Just, we were talking about, I said I only read escapist literature.
And right now, are you reading all her books?
Of course. I have a list in my, in my pocketbook of them, in order, because I'm a big believer in reading writers in order. And so, so yes, well, and, and I have to admit, I'm rereading her. So.
I only read one of her books.
Yeah.
So what else did you escape into likewise?
Um, I, I like, I like science fiction, I like, you know, I think I've read everything from timelines. I love Carzocca, I've read all of his stuff, I've read everything by Tripoli, ready. Off the kind of, you know, no, no particular, you know, I don't, I don't stick to any one.
Right.
Genre, I like good writers.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah.
Reading coming true.
Well, and talk about reading a writer in order.
Age, like over the.
But that's what, that's why reading writers in order is so, so important. You read his early stuff, which is all Southern Gothic, and then you read his, you know, Vichy Queen in New York stuff. At the end of his, you know, like, I, I mean, it's just, it's fantastic to read that breath and say, that was all written by the same guy. You know? Fabulous stuff.
Same things happened to me through college.
Yeah.
My early writings, and now my papers I just written, wrote for graduation.
Yep.
It's much different writing, for sure.
Yeah. Yeah, this is, this is the new musical, it's a brand new musical.
The one that the, that's on the poster downstairs.
Yeah.
It's really mixed, everything like soul gospel.
It was postponed a few weeks ago for COVID, because like half passed.
Been 15 minutes in.
Not quite.
Are we going to check this?
Another minute.
We are, and so we can, yeah, probably call it, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, enough social time, says Tom.
We only time deny?
Is there a motion for findings to discuss personnel? We have a motion, oh, I don't have to record this?
You have to record at the end.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye's have it, is there a motion to enter executive session? Motion by Counselor Shonval, second by Counselor Wazza, it's now 8:20, and we're entering executive session, thank you quick though.
You are welcome, see you all tomorrow. Go ahead, give that blue button for me.
Yeah, man.
You look best.
I wouldn't go that far.
He just wants to play the machine.